It is five, 12, five o'clock. I'd like to call to order the city council work session. Two A, discussion regarding development, vision, goals and core objectives for Project Greenfield. A fifty-two point six eight six acre tract of land located at thirty-six fifteen east Flugerville Parkway. We'd like to welcome Thomas Hunter to kick off the presentation. Welcome.
Well, good afternoon, uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Holiday.
Boom.
And Council. Hey, we're really excited to be here, uh, before you this evening. Um, as you can see, we're trying to run a competition for how many people would be fit up here. But when we initially started this conversation, uh, just a few months ago, um, we were really talking about, uh, you know, city leadership and vision on opportunities within the city of Flugerville and, and that kind of started off with talking about different parcels and, I want to take a moment to recognize that what we're really doing here tonight is talking about vision. The vision of Flugerville and how this specific piece of property fits into it. This council, um, took an action to fund, uh, to approve the purchase of this property, which closes here in just a couple of weeks. Um, and we're excited, day, sorry, and we're excited to have a group of people before you tonight. That have done what you asked us to do, which was to start the process early and to not delay, um, on trying to bring forward concepts, uh, for a vision. One of the things that's important as we walk through this conversation and we know that you're used to this because you've got a, you've got another little project called Downtown East, uh, if you may have heard of it. You, you guys have been through this before, um, you understand the, the steps that go into this from beginning to now construction, uh, now that Downtown East is broken ground. But again, we're going to be talking about concepts tonight. So if you see things on a map, we're just going to stress to you that they are just that. And we're trying to start somewhere so that we can, um, see what, what y'all's vision is, um, and understand better where you want us to go, um, with this project. I'm really excited. We've got some great partners tonight, a, a couple of phenomenal consultants. You know some of them. Uh, but we've also got Robin with us who has really been, um, putting in so much work on this project and we're really excited about it. So with that, uh, I'd love to turn it over and, and let the team go.
Hi, I'm Robin Amiga. I am the Assistant Director of Development Engineering. Um, last time I spoke to you all about this project, it was in September and it was just after we put it under contract. So I kind of just, I know we have a few new faces and I just want to go ahead and, uh, give you a background on the property. Kind of set up the infrastructure that's on it and really how we, where, how we got to where we are today. I'm also going to introduce you to our consulting team. So this is the parcel. It's just across from the lake. We're referring to it as Project Greenfield currently. Um, we're hopeful to get a more creative name at some point, uh, but today we're, that's how we're referring to it. Um, it's right up, it's right across from the lake. It's along Flugerville Parkway. And it backs, uh, the back of it is Lakeside Meadows and also on the east side of it's Lakeside Meadows. And then there's vacant farmland, um, to the west. There's some key components to this track. So it's fifty-two acres. It's zoned agriculture development reserve. So what that means is before it goes through the development process, it's going to have to come back through a zoning process. Uh, it'll go through PNC and city council in order for it to be a viable, be developed. Uh, the front edge of Flugerville Parkway, that's a feature four lane divided, um, highway. That is currently in design by the CIP team. So that is going through the process to be expanded currently. Uh, there is a water line along the front edge as well. That's a thirty inch and it's, it's expected to be adequate, um, to serve the site completely. And then there is an offsite wastewater connection that will have to be made and that stub is for a twenty-four inch that's located in Lakeside Meadows. So those are some of the key infrastructure components that are going to have to take place. There's also a roadway connection to the east that's going to be necessary for the site. Um, but overall, um, part of the reason this was such a desirable property, not to mention it's the location, it's in the center of town once we're completely built out. So it's a very beautiful site. It's near the lake, which is a huge amenity for our city, but it also doesn't require a lot of offsite infrastructure for it to be able to move forward, which a lot of is already in the works. So I'm going to introduce you to our team. So to my right, this is Brian Adams. He's with Kim Lee Horn. He's been working on concepts for this site since we, we started the visi-, um, since we started the due diligence. And then Jen Boss is with Hyatt Brown, Mark Gilbert, Hyatt Brown, and then Jay Brown with Hyatt Brown. So, um, Brian is really going to go into some of the, the concepts and the land planning that he's done to help us envision the site. And then Jennifer, Mark and Jay are going to do different components of the presentation to really go through the like finite details of what needs to take place for this project to go start to finish. And this is just the timeline. We put it under contract in September and October the eighth is when city council authorized that purchase. Uh, November, there was a public hearing at PCDC and then January, uh, the bond authorization was requested. There is an item on y'all's consent agenda tonight related to this as well. Uh, and then it says February closing, but I believe I saw that it might be closing at the end of this week if all goes well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian to really start looking at the much prettier pictures. Thank you.
Thanks for having us here. We're excited about this project. Uh, it's really interesting to watch cities as they have a vision and want to grow that vision and they're actively moving into that direction. We, we've seen multiple cities really do this over the last ten years or so and having the foresight to move forward like this. So as we've already, as Robin has already pointed, it is, right now it's not the center of the city, but as the future growth happens and things happening to the east, it will become the city, uh, center of a major, uh, residential zone. So here just kind of highlights the location of, of the site and the, its relationship back to existing residential and future residential and the lake. So moving forward, this is a, this is a land plan, right? So it, but it's more of a vision plan. It's more of taking what we've heard from the, the vision of the city, what we want to create here. And what type of space we can create because it's all about creating that, that, uh, that space where people want to spend time and, and, uh, really create that this lifestyle, basically an eighteen hour kind of community, uh, that, that connects back to the open spaces to the lake, uh, connects to a, uh, a mixed use, uh, F and B, a food and beverage, uh, retail center that has entertainment venues. Uh, we're looking at, uh, higher education campus. Uh, that's the light blue, uh, building up at the, the top. And then as you move through the site also to the, I'm sorry, I'm used to pointing and jumping up and down, but the darker brown buildings are, are multifamily buildings. And then ring by various heights of townhomes. Uh, again, this is a, this is, this plan. Uh, there's, it hasn't been a market analysis done yet. There hasn't been a lot of process that hasn't been done. It's more of a vision of what could be on the site. And, and our experience of where things need to be located and how they could possibly be laid out. The, uh, one thing I, I didn't mention is the, the striped area, the brown and, uh, pink kind of striped area would be a, a location where a possible hotel could be. Uh, we're thinking that, that, that hotel also would link into a, a convention center for the city located, uh, somewhere around the higher education campus. Kind of all, kind of activating this from an entertainment venue, uh, component would be a, a large amphitheater. That we're thinking is probably not a traditional amphitheater. That's a sloped amphitheater. It's more of a flat kind of community green that we could get, you know, a couple thousand people out there have music. But it could be very flexible for everything from the different seasons, you know, Halloween things to Christmas celebrations to, you know, throughout the year to have different celebrations that could be, that could happen out there.
But from the city's perspective, I mean, one thing that we really discussed, you can go to the next slide, uh, was really visioning that, that higher education facility. And how that could be programmed to sort of anchor this site, um, with all the mixes of uses that are necessary as well.
And one back, one thing, you, you see kind of the, the S shape piece that connects back to the, the lake on the plan, kind of to the right, um, of the plan that connects back to the lake. What we're seeing, we think, uh, pedestrian connections are extremely important for this because open space is extremely important for these type of environments. So we're seeing a very graceful type, uh, pedestrian bridge that links across from the campus and the retail mixed use component. Back to the open space and the lake area to the, to the right plan, plan east. Again, none of this is designed from an architectural standpoint. Again, it's all about vision, um, of kind of organize, organizing the elements, uh, throughout the site. And the bridge is certainly not designed. This is just a, uh, a representation of a pedestrian connection across the, across the future four lane road. Uh, but as you, as you start work, working around the site, you, you can see again, the, the, the campus really anchoring the right-hand side of the screen, uh, with the, with the large kind of central green located there, all overlooking the lake in the distance. Uh, both the detention lake and the, the larger Lake Flugerville. The, the potential, um, and then when you see the pink and the kind of the teal colored blue, that would be mainly, uh, retail mixed use components with very pedestrian oriented type space. We have some, uh, some, uh, concept images that go along with this with potentially a second floor kind of, uh, support type office type spaces. A lot of times these could be doctors, um, real estate offices, things like that.
Can I ask you a question, Brian?
Yes, please.
Will the, um, shared use parking garage be, uh, is, is that for everything? Is that for, is that enough space to walk around this whole entire track?
Absolutely. So what we have, we have the three large parking garages located there. And a lot of times on these type of projects in the multifamily, the first floor would be for the mixed use. Again, we have to go through a whole bunch of studies before, I mean, this is just kind of typically what happens. The, the multifamily, a lot of times the first floors are dedicated to the retail and the upper floors are dedicated to the, the, uh, multifamily components. And there's a really good shared use ratio between the office, well, the, the campus and the, uh, food and beverage mixed use component. So we're thinking that that garage is very heavily, uh, mixed, uh, a shared parking garage. So yes. And knowing that our neighbors to, again, the plan left is our single family, traditional single family homes. We're using townhome type products to help transition up to these different heights, you know, ju- it just helps. So it's just not such a hard transition from one to the next. And those, right now on this plan, we're showing those as like two level, a two-story townhomes. And then as you get deeper into the site, the little, uh, city, city homes and city townhomes, those could go up to three stories easily. And then the, uh, multifamily right here shown at four levels, uh, with, uh, structured parking.
Have you thought about what type of architecture you'll be using?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. No, no. We, what we're looking at really is the space in between the buildings. We, we know enough that, we, we know that the, um, a multifamily building is about sixty, sixty-three to sixty-five feet deep. And we know what a parking garage is. So what we're doing right now is more of the space in between the buildings and how, what type of places we're creating for the pedestrian, for the pedestrians and the users. Uh, architects would come in and actually design this. And I think that we would, we would hopefully be part of the group that, but as the city decides what the vision of the architecture of this and what it feels like at the end of the day. That, that'd be a whole nother study. So we haven't, we have not got to that at all.
So you're showing us what the possibility is, but the market will dictate what the reality is.
Absolutely. And, and the market would also help to dictate what the architectural style is.
So we're at the very beginning of the process and really Hyatt Brown will go through where we are. We're in stage one. So we're in that, like, we want to know what you all would like for this property. So that when we start those next phases and getting a developer on board and actually starting the project, the process of putting the nuts and bolts together, that we have an idea of what that framework should look like.
When you mentioned the, the concept of a three-story, I think you called it a city home, town home concept, is that, is that vertically, um, a, a single unit or is this something where we're going to have like multi-level condos?
Again, thi- this would be, it would be a single unit. What, at least conceptually, what we're, what I was thinking when we were drawing this, the townhomes are single owner, you know, owner occupied. Townhomes, you know, attached vertically stacked, uh, single unit. What I was calling the city homes are actually detached. Basically they're almost the same size of, as a, um, uh, uh.
They were called out as cottage courts in our comprehensive plans. So it's, it's the same. That's the apples of it.
Okay. But they, they're like, a lot of them is, uh, zero lot lines or they, they could be simple zero lot lines. But again, this is just kind of based on experience and what, what we see happening in these types of, uh, environments. But what we do know is that retail will have to have some visibility. We know that, so that's why it's up front, you know, on the road. We know that we need a transition from single family homes. So that's why we wrap the band of the two-story townhomes around the perimeter. We, we know that the, the university and, uh, the, uh, would, will want to have an anchor of it. And, you know, it has some sort of university green. We know it would want to have some good views and we know it wants to be on a prominent site. So those are the type of things that we're looking at right now, you know, just kind of site organization. But this just gives you an idea of amassing of what it could be.
And could you, could you give me an idea as to the connection to the west? So i- is it just that one line behind the parking garage or? Yeah, I'm not seeing any connectivity to, to any western tract, which would be top of this, head to the top.
Those can certainly be coordinated. I believe that, um, our subdivision units would mandate it.
But we don't have any development pressure on that parcel between this and HEB right now.
No, we haven't had any. We've had utility conversations only on that parcel.
So these are just a series of sketchup models as you start kind of flying around the site, looking at it. Again, no architecture. The bridge is just a concept of how we span, because we are trying to span the, um, electric license and a four lane divided road. And so that's, that's why we're showing conceptually a, a suspension bridge. But it's some sort of connection across there that we're not, the pedestrians are easily, uh, connecting back, back between the, the open space and the development itself. But this just gives kind of a sense of scale of what's happening in that space, uh, focused into the hotel at the top, kind of the little, um, pedestrian oriented, uh, retail mixed use zone anchored by the university on one side, anchored by retail kind of on the north side and, um, the, uh, mixed use, you know, easily connection, you know, strong connections back into the mixed, uh, the multifamily development. Again.
I do want to pause real quick just to, to, to drop, to drop a note here. One of the things that this council has talked about and, and we're actively working on, um, is the hotel convention center legislation. And so that's an input as we look at the proximity of the hotel relative to where a potential convention center could go. That proximity unlocks, if, if we're successful in, uh, that legislation unlocks that ability to recapture that ten years worth of state income tax. And utilize that, uh, potentially as, uh, negotiating leverage in a public-private partnership or with a potential university. So that this council and the city would have the opportunity, um, to help incentivize and control the look and feel and quality of this development so that it is not exclusively happening based on what the market wants to bear. But what we can do to incentivize the type of development that, that y'all want to see.
So is it either higher ed campus or convention center? Or is it possibility of doing both? I'm, I'm just wondering why city land, we're planning to do residential building. I, I guess I, I don't, I don't understand the purpose like originally. Cause I'm coming on new and wasn't part of any discussion. So.
And we'll talk a little bit.
Oh, okay. I didn't. Okay. I'm just wondering why the city would be involved in, in, this looks like a, a developer plan that would be brought to us rather than us doing it. So I, I, I'm just wondering why.
So sometimes whenever you have different incentives and really their presentation will go into this, but the city gets to control the narrative a little bit better. There's a lot of times developers come at the, come to the table with what they want, but it's not necessarily going to bring like commercial uses on day one. It's not going to bring all of those things that are desired from the community. And so a lot of times we're getting, we're getting a lot of residential on the front end of it. And then some of the other things are waiting for the market to drive them. So whenever there's the infrastructure part of the conversation is really in the city's control and most of it is, you know, almost ready. Then we're able to kind of lead into those incentives aerrally that the city's going to be owning houses and things like that. That's not what the vision would be. It's just setting up the, like a developer typically comes in and sets up what the land plan is, what the entitlements are, then you can kind of get into the, she'll, Jen will actually go through what that'll look like from like a performance standpoint. But it isn't that we're looking to be a landlord.
So if I'm not mistaken, we're, we're not even looking to construct most of this. We're, we're expecting to partner with the university and have them construct the building, partner with a hotel. Sell that land to them and they can construct it, sell off the parcels. Hopefully we've increased the value quite a bit and sell off the parcels for the, the residential so that we can invest it in incentives to ensure that we get the, the type of development that we want. Is that, is that the idea?
Yes.
I mean essentially, so the easiest thing to put it as a, is you're just wanting to set what the vision is. And oftentimes, as I said, and I'll put it more plainly, they come with terrible ideas that they want for us to actually execute or incentivize. Instead, we know what the potential is of this property. So consequently, we, we have a plan regarding what we want. And then we can pick and choose what partners are willing to go ahead and invest in that idea, that concept and that implementation as, you know, we pick our own dance partner as opposed to dance partner picking us.
And this gives us a chance to, uh, do some additional commercial and residential development inside the, uh, area of the city that is all already inside our city limits. So we don't have to worry so much for, at least for this portion of it, about, uh, the ETJ limitations that the legislature has put on us and, and may put on us in the future. It's already inside our city limits. Uh, that gives us a lot more control over it. And then if we own it, we've got a lot more control over it.
One of the things I think we, we see quite often is, uh, the developments go to the places that are ready for them. Um, things happen because we make them happen. Uh, the, the land for a university, having that ready, having infrastructure in place, uh, dramatically increases the possibility that we will actually be able to recruit, uh, an education facility that, uh, you know, we've been, uh, including in the, the comprehensive economic development strategic plan for a number of years now.
So is having residential a requirement for the success of what we, of the other civic or, uh, retail uses on this land?
Absolutely. From a, from an urban planner's standpoint, absolutely. Because we want people there twenty-four hours a day and we want to activate the space. And this is a fifty-three acre piece of property. Isn't a, a huge commercial property. But when you start getting that range, it starts becoming a, um, you know, fifty-three acres, it starts becoming a big power centers and things like that, which isn't very walkable. So by having the people live here, people actually owning the land and activating streets, walking the dogs, utilizing the, the little coffee shops or whatever out here. It, it gives it the place some realness to it. And then people from the outside, they sense that realness and come in and, and help activate it and grow these type of, uh, mixed use type places. So there's a reason that it's called mixed use is because, I mean, that's where people actually, so many people want to be. Uh, and, and, uh, we want to create this really cool kind of walkable place that, that we're, we're drawing people in, not only from Flugerville, but from the surrounding cities also.
Right. City manager, did you want to add something to that?
I just, and we had mentioned that, that mid housing the other day at the retreat. So we were hoping to see some townhomes, et cetera.
And it, and I, I think it also flows very well into the neighborhoods that are already around.
That, that's, that's would be the exact goal because we want to be seamless, right? We don't want to have walls that, that transition from one to another. You know, we want this to be a seamless environment. So it, there's, it's porous. People can come and go and it, it's really open and, and, uh, you know, people take it as their own. You know, it becomes, you know, people take ownership in the space.
Destination.
So just to, just to clarify my original question, it's only one building that we're looking at, at either a higher ed or a conference center, not both?
No, no, it'd be both. It'd be a.
Oh, be both together?
I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay.
A higher education building with a conference center integrated into it. And with the hotel that helps activate it. So, uh, most of the time the convention conference centers, especially major conference type centers, you know, they, they need an F and B component. They need a, they need the hotel. They need the, you know, and then the universities drive so many, they have so many meetings just for the university. So they need meeting spaces. So all those come together in kind of a natural, kind of symbiotic, uh, relationship.
Emphasis on conceptual, obviously too.
Yeah, for sure.
So would this possibly include like performance space?
Could.
Like bass concert?
Definitely could. And I think one of the things that, you know, we, we, we ran past because just for time constraints, but we've spent hours and hours kind of talking through this is, you know, it's strategic to have that, um, kind of green space in front of, uh, the university anchor slash conference center along with that, um, that venue space. Because, um, we see that as being a pretty, uh, a pretty ha- pretty highly activatable space. Um, where you've kind of got the university and the community arts kind of playing off of each other, um, which was a fun concept that we thought, um, would be cool to pursue. Anyways, Brian.
And, and the way that the road network is, is, it's hard to show it here, but the way the road network is set up, that is that we could close off the pedestrian street, I mean, some of the streets. And make pedestrian only when you have major events. And some of these places get to where major events, there's so many people out here, they need to close it Friday, Saturday and Sunday. You know, because there's so many pedestrians are, are in these zones. But you know, maybe it's just an event that's happening. We're able to close off the streets and the circulation, the, the safety and everything else still functions. But we're looking at the, those type of opportunities even at this, at this early stage.
Clyde Warren was one of those examples that we looked at. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but Clyde Warren, if you've ever been to that park in downtown Dallas, it's bound by a freeway, lots of major roads around it. But really that space is so awesome to be in when you're there with your kids and stuff like that.
It is a fre- it is a freeway. Yeah, yeah, it is a free- yeah, yeah. It's, it's, it's example, I think it's example of cap and stitch, of putting parks on highways and how that, that works. So.
But I drove forty-five minutes to get there with my kid usually when I lived there.
So how, um, what size of a university is that building, uh, would that building be able to hold? So how, what size of a university is that building, would that building be able to hold?
Yeah, well, I'll go back. So right now, what's drawn, again, not based on any program elements, what you physically see there on that plan is about 250,000 square feet.
How many stories is that?
It ranges between four and seven, so the wings are kind of four levels in the central block. Again, there's, it's not based on any university saying anything.
No, 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 we know, we know.
Yeah, no, a seven story building is, is getting there, so I'm happy to see that.
I just wondered, was wondering what the vision is, like what size we're hoping to.
You're talking like enrollment?
Yeah.
How many, how many students does that support?
We are so early on and we'd love to be able to answer that question. Today, what we wanted to hear was, do you want a university anchor?
So, so Tom, so Thomas, maybe the easiest, maybe the easiest way to do this, go ahead and look at Texas State and Round Rock, use whatever base they have as their, you know, baseline and then use, and then analogize it to what's here. Because I'm thinking that realistically speaking, if you're going to get someone, a university to invest in here, it's going to be, you know, something that's going to be an adjunct to whatever the main campus is. So consequently, you're going to want enough space where you can actually keep staff and have concentration there, offer a variety of different class levels, but not at the same time have a full blown wing. May want to also look at what UT's doing, UT Taylor. So, I mean, and seeing what, what's happening with that specific campus as well, you know, and that's obviously coming with the, with the CHIPS Act and some of the other things that are coming from there. But those, those are things that come to mind. I think the reason why A and M didn't blow up the way it did in Round Rock was that I don't think they had enough courses and I don't think you have enough staff to actually go and employ it where you truly felt like, hey, listen for that. Because I mean, look at the law school. Law school is in the middle of Fort Worth, Texas, and it has literally become one of the top law schools in the state of Texas in the country.
Didn't they have the number one bar pass rate this last year?
They did, they did.
They were ahead of UT?
Oh my gosh. Yeah, clock's always right twice a day. It's okay.
Yeah, I was just wondering for expansion purposes because a lot of times they'll come, you know, like come and then 10, five, 10 years later, it's successful and they need expansion. So then I was just wondering about the plan that if, can it accommodate expansion if it is successful in the way we.
That's, that is, that is a great thing for them to take into consideration on that, you know, expansion, just like we're doing with city hall and the other aspects.
Yeah, and what we used is the.
Go to the UT.
The University of, yeah, U N T campus as a, as a model because.
In Frisco?
In Frisco, yeah. So that's, that's the one that we used as a, as a starting point. We also looked at.
How many square feet is that one?
The phase one is only about 100,000 square feet, the, the first phase, but they, there's, there's multiple phases for that. That's actually meant to be a major campus. It's going to rival the one in Denton by the time they finish, but we were looking at the first three phases of it.
And it's not too far from the one in Denton if you look at it though.
Yeah.
That's what's shocking about that.
Closer every day.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. And the, we also looked at the A and M Mays Business School in city center in Houston because that actually has a convention center, a hotel and the, the university buildings in there, so we were looking at that.
That's a good one.
Just to give a sense of scale, so this is Clyde Warren and you can see the, the space that we're looking at, I wish I could point, but there's the, the pavilion kind of on the left-hand side of the plan of Clyde Warren, that's the central green space. The, most of the activities work from the sidewalk inward, only in major, major elements does it push out to the right. But you can see that the space we've allocated is actually a bit wider than what Clyde Warren is. It's not quite as long, but we could, we feel very confident that it could be major events in this scale of a space. So it just kind of gives a sense of a, a real life activity and, and a real life project and the, what it looks like on the plan. The next, another one that we looked at, which I just happened to run across in South Carolina, it was downtown Greer. It, it is a really, really neat little project that they came in, the city was dying, they came in and reworked the streetscapes. If you look on the left-hand side, that's kind of the typical business day, so they have all the teaser parking out in front of the building, so it's easy access to get in and out of those shops and everything. The, the picture down below is every Thursday and Friday and Saturday nights, they basically close the streets. It's a curbless environment and it's, it's just a really, really cool type space. They have removable bollards, so what happened in New Orleans can't happen here unless somebody doesn't activate the bollards, but it's, it's a very real, it's a really neat space. And again, the, the, the plan and the aerial photograph are both at the same scale, so it gives you a sense of, of scale for that. A project that I was lucky enough to be part of the, the master plan for is, is the boardwalk at Granite Park in Plano. The two pictures are on the left-hand side. This is kind of what we were thinking on that, that triangular piece on the kind of the right-hand side of the project. Maybe these could be like more signature restaurants overlooking the lake and overlooking the green. This, this is the plan of, of the University of North Texas in Frisco. What you see on the left-hand side is the overall master plan. It connects to a major park, kind of like what, what y'all have with the Lake Flugerville and then a whole bunch of trail connections throughout the whole thing. And, but what you see on the right-hand side is the first phase building, an amphitheater and, and how the scale of it compares to what we're looking at on this plan at least. And then just some concept images of what the retail village could look like. Again, we're not into architecture, but it's more about the feel of the space. You know, we, we want it to be of this area. We don't want to recreate Austin or Fort Worth or wherever, you know, we want it to be of Flugerville, make it feel like Flugerville. So, but the, the scale of the space and the canopy of the trees and what some of the courtyards could feel like. And then finally, you know, the pedestrian bridges, you know, connecting the, the, the open space back to the, the campus and making sure that it's interconnected, you know, it can really be a signature gateway type element of the thing, of the place. And people are doing these type of things all across the country and it really helps activate and create a really strong identity. It's better than a billboard, you know, you know that it's, it's this place and it works as a gateway.
Well, and to that point, that's something I don't know as a council, we've talked about as much, that I'd be intrigued to have that conversation. There's certain cities that you know where you enter a certain part of the city, you're in that portion of the city. They have its own central identities. So I know that we're looking at this area near the lake, which will be the heart of Flugerville, if it's built all the way out, but we're also having a conversation about ETJ, so I get to, I love to hear what everyone's going to say about what that actually looks like realistically speaking in the future. We're also talking about redevelopment too, you know, you know, down Piccon, you know, what, what does our southern gateway and other things look like from that? I guess the question I would have for y'all to keep in mind is that what do we want to be unique specific areas? And, and if we want unique specific areas around the city, what do we want to be identifiable and what for, for those aspects? What should people be thinking about as they enter those areas?
Explore Flugerville.
So I could add, our comprehensive plan does have neighborhood districts established in that. And so the vision for that was that those neighborhood districts become like signature pieces toward, there's a uniform signs that are in there so that when you leave one and go into the other, this is the lake district, that you would, you would actually know you're in the lake district. It's all consistent character, so it's a good point to remind us about.
And I, I think our new, the welcome sign, it has all of these different pieces of Flugerville, the tree, the this, the that, and I just think that would be really, really nice in different districts as well.
I'd like that.
It has, it has gray color, it has a lot of detail put into it already.
If we're going to go big.
So Jen's really going to get into the nuts and bolts of the how on a project like this.
Yeah, absolutely. So good evening, everyone. Pleasure to see many of you again and thank you, Brian, for presenting such an exciting vision, which we, we captured and tried to, to document on this slide, which helped to guide our thinking about what comes next and how you take that vision and refine it and make sure that it can be real and then take it out to market to find the partners that can actually deliver on it. And so I'm going to ask Mark to, to talk a little bit about what's going on right here that's guiding how this can be delivered.
Yeah, I mean, all of y'all know very well the area, you're all city council members here in Flugerville, but we, we were really intrigued just kind of really assessing the context of the site because you do have this massive new HEB facility on Flugerville Parkway. You do have what looks to be a successful Baylor Scott and White Medical Center that's in the process of expanding, looks to be trying to attract additional medical uses on adjacent properties as well. We've got the massive wide roding project that, that's going to create more connectivity to all the areas east and bring them into historic Flugerville as well. Everything going on to the south, it's really, really shocking level of scale, just how much is going on at Lakeside Meadows, 417 acres there, everything from single family to industrial users. Carmel East as well with over a thousand homes and then the actual multifamily developments that are fronting right by Lake Flugerville on Flugerville Parkway. So it's really remarkable, tons of housing and we can absolutely understand why there's an interest by council and staff to have some placemaking with some additional uses going on on this site.
And this really gets at the question that you were asking council member Ryan about why, why this and why the city would be engaging in this. And we can see already with what's going on right now, where the market is driving and what the rest of this space will be if the market continues to drive all development. Because the, the kinds of things that we saw in Brian's vision don't necessarily happen organically. It takes a very intentional vision and strategy to make them happen, to create that place, to have those kind of enhanced environments where there are these amenities or public spaces that are not always the most cost effective thing to do and something that a developer is not inclined to do on their own. But because, and everyone keeps saying this and we have a little graphic about it too, because that development is moving further and further east, we know that this is going to be a, a central part of the city, maybe not the center, but a central part of the city. And for there to be the kinds of amenities that you all want to, to see and to deliver on that quality of life, it has to be driven in part by the city. And that's what we see happening in communities in and around Austin and, and all over the state and the rest of the country as well. So what we are here to talk about is how we go from that vision and some of these high level concepts into project implementation. And so we've broken it down into these three phases, which is acquisition and goal definition. You're well on your way already toward the acquisition, but how do we go from that, that concept and have this conversation with you all to say, what do you want to see here? And then potentially what does the public want to see here as well? Doing the right kind of homework, so due diligence, figuring out what is market feasible, what is financially feasible? What might infrastructure cost? We're talking about 52, 53 acres and we're going to need infrastructure to enable this development. What might that cost and what role does the city play in, in helping to deliver that or helping to, to fund that in some way? And then how do you find the right partner? What is the right delivery structure? And then finally getting into design permitting and, and construction. So what we've done is to break those three phases.
Jennifer, can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, as you start with this, can you give us any analogous cities that have done just this? Like the, like that would be good, and I'm not telling you now, I'm saying like the information, follow up information of that, because that would be good, because obviously we're not reinventing the wheel here, but it'd be good guidance for the council to be cognizant of the fact that, hey, listen dude, if these folks can do it over here, why not Flugerville?
Not a problem. Case studies, best practices will not be a problem. Any other thoughts before moving into the process? All right. So we've broken those, those three phases down into a set of questions that we would ask at each one. And obviously we're not trying to get answers to those questions tonight, but instead they represent the key questions that we would be hoping to, to answer or that you all will need to be answering to get to the next stage. So for instance, in the beginning, we need your direction on goals. So in your mind, what does success look like in 10 years if you are standing at the center of this site? What do you want to see? What are the citizens of Flugerville saying about this place? What is it delivering to the surrounding community? And then how would you prioritize those features? We saw a lot of, of creative and incredible things in Brian's images. If not all of them are, are possible, what is most important to you all? Or if we need to phase them and space them out, what is most important to you? So that's going to be a key piece of this, just figuring out how your goals align for the site. Additionally, and here it is, so that eastward path of growth, thinking about the ETJ, I mean, you all know your ETJ, but it's, it's essentially the size of, of the current city limits and goes directly, you know, east, southeast and you see Lake Flugerville there with that, that green dot right in the middle. And so recognizing that this will be potentially a center of the city, at least geographically, and, and that these amenities are going to be an important part of the community that grows east of, of the current city boundaries. So then we would move on to, you know, market analysis. We've talked a lot and I think there have been many mentions about this being a high level concept that has not yet been tested by the market. And so making sure that there is demand for the uses that have been presented or if not demand today, then when might that demand occur to think about things like phasing? Also potentially testing market viability by talking with the development community, you know, where are they right now? And luckily we're, we're in conversations with a, a number of developers already. We have developers at downtown east, there are developers coming to you every day. And so folks are, are passing along these key messages, let's take that and let's incorporate that into the analysis that occurs. There are specialty uses here too, hotels, convention centers that are going to require specialty feasibility studies. And even something like attracting a, a university and ensuring that we understand the appropriate size. What is the, the ideal size for a first phase or for that potential growth that is necessary for, for a satellite campus? What are the types of programs that universities are interested putting off site that, that they know they can attract students to based on the surrounding demographics? All of those are going to be critical questions as part of this market analysis phase. Shifting then further into phase two, infrastructure. We've got a pedestrian bridge. We have enhanced sidewalks, we've got enhanced materials that would go into that roadway with the curbless environment. That's not standard infrastructure that a developer would build for a, a standard housing development. And so that's going to have a cost associated with it beyond what might be market feasible for a developer. And so thinking through what are all of those unique elements that help to make this a place that a developer would not naturally build on their own? Figuring out what that cost is and how the city is best situated to support that, to help guide that growth. Because as I mentioned, it's not going to happen organically most likely. But then also thinking through what is the tax benefit? What is the fiscal impact of this development and how can that potentially be reinvested in the project to enable this? What does a PID look like? How might TERs be involved here? And thinking about some of those creative financing strategies to enable that infrastructure. Then we get to concept refinement and, and phasing. So here, we've got to take all of that good learning, understanding the goals, understanding what the market has shown, what financial feasibility has shown and feed that back into the design. So maybe the, the orientation changes, maybe based on phasing, we are able to break the site up into different blocks for phase, you know, one, two, three, or different zones because we know that the university partner of interest is not going to be ready to move for five, seven years, whatever the case might be. Pouring all of that good learning back into that concept refinement, thinking about the phasing and, and importantly refining that vision before a developer is solicited for. While you want to have, just like on downtown east, while you want to have a developer on board to work through the, the details and the nitty gritty with you, it's important to be able to take out some sort of a clear vision and priorities to the development committee so that you get developers with the right kind of risk profile that are responding and you, you know that you can be in good partnership together. Another key aspect here is, and we've talked about, you know, what do we wait for in terms of market demand, but is there any part of this site that you might want to reserve for your own purposes? You've already got a great city hall coming up out of the ground, well, will be soon coming out of the ground, that is, is designed to be able to grow with you all for 10, 20 years. You've got the rec center that's, that's going to be coming out of the ground, but what about additional school sites, additional public safety sites that might be necessary on the eastern side of the city as you continue to grow? And so thinking about facilities, master planning and how it, does it make sense to reserve any part of the site for some of that future need or future growth? Something to think about. Then getting down to partner selection, a big question here is, you know, what is your preferred delivery structure? And we've got some examples on, on the next slide, but how, how does it make the most sense to bring this to market and to attract the right kinds of developers? How do you market the site? How do you brand the site again to bring in those, those right kind of partners? And so what we have, just high, high level here, some very basic boundary questions or gating questions are, will there And so what we have, just high, high level here, some very basic boundary questions or gating questions are, will there be sales? Or is this long-term ground lease property? You all are a young city, you are continually experiencing growth. It may make sense to hang on to the land, though there may also be reasons if you're interested in for sale housing on some portion of the site. Or if there is a compelling reason that say, a university partner wants to own their, their land for whatever reason. Maybe there's a compelling reason to sell the site. Otherwise, we typically do advise that cities, especially young growing cities as your own, retain the, the ownership to the land for future flexibility. But obviously that's something that, that needs to be worked out. We're not providing clear recommendations today, just saying this is something to think about. Do you go with a, a single master developer that can help guide the whole development over time? Maybe potentially bringing in a component developer for special uses like a hotel or a convention center? Or do you follow more of a land development model where a land developer comes in and then prepares the pad sites and you all engage with a variety of developers? We don't have answers for what the rest, the right direction is today, because we don't yet know what your goals are and all these things are dependent. But these are the questions that, that need to be assessed. And we've given you, I know we're, we're running short on time, I want to make sure there's time for you all to ask questions. But we've, we've put a few examples up here of, of different projects, some of which you might be familiar with, like Bell Boulevard, the Bell District and Colony Park within the, the city of Austin. Also a project that our team has worked on in, in Virginia, a small city, smaller than your city. But again, a gateway project, a game changer for them and, and each of them have different models.
Has anyone from your team worked on Colony Park?
No, 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 I'm saying the West Falls project.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. The other two are, are just examples.
Okay.
So we can certainly dive into these a bit more and explain some of those nuances. But again, I want to make sure that you have time to ask questions as we get into.
You mentioned that the Falls Church is smaller than Flugerville? Is that, did I hear that right? What's the population of Falls Church?
You know, when we started working on it, they were only 14,000 people. They're probably 20, 25 by now, max.
I think they have a large daytime population, correct?
No, actually, one of the main goals of that project was bringing more office in, because they're a bedroom community to, to Washington DC largely.
Oh yeah, the headquarters of Judge, Judge Advocate General is in Falls Church.
Ah, okay, well, it's one of the few offices they have then, because that was a, a major pull for them. They've got great schools, which is why they're a bedroom community. So, you know, we're, we're getting in now, we're phase three, we're almost to the finish line here, design and permitting, figuring out how you all can help expedite things. And essentially how, how you can play a role with, with zoning. And also how some of the upcoming CIP projects can help facilitate the, the work around here. And I know that Robyn's already discussed some of those that are ongoing, that will enable greater development here. And then, you know, we get to construction, which I know you all are, are already thinking about, you're already there at that groundbreaking, I'm sure. So I'll stop there and, and just see, we want your thoughts on that process. We want your thoughts on how we walk through this and how we get to implementation.
I had a, I had a question about, in general, I mean, you know, obviously it's just an estimate. What's the timeline to phase three, from phase one to phase three, like range?
Yeah, so what we can provide is the timeframe for downtown east. You all are a unique city, you move very quickly.
Fast.
Or you, you are very fast, you've got incredible staff and I don't say that lightly. We kicked off with you all in January 2022, had our, for downtown east. We had our market analysis and concept plan done by May of that same year. We were issuing the RFQP in September. And right before we all went on holiday break, we had a selection of developer. And I think you all approved it that January, the first session in the next year. So if, if we are able to work effectively and efficiently with you all, I think we could be on a similar timeframe. So that altogether was one year to get to that developer selection.
And then it was about a year from developer selection to breaking ground?
Two.
Two.
Two years.
Two.
It was two. That's, that's not, that's not bad.
It's not bad in the development world.
It's actually like, it's actually like speed compared to what we usually see.
Well, I think it's a little different since city hall and recreation center were more under the purview of city council versus a university, which would require outside partner, but I don't know.
And that's where the phasing comes in. You know, we recognize that you all don't have control over all of these users and some users will move faster than others. Universities don't have the greatest reputation for making decisions quickly. There can be exceptions, no doubt, but when we think about phasing, it will be helpful to consider what the market can bear and what developers are excited to deliver first. In addition to how you, how you create a critical mass and excitement around the place. So it's, it's about balancing those things and making sure that, that you're creating the place you want. While still having that long-term vision for some of the, the later joiners.
While we're talking about schools, did we, I didn't hear anyone say ACC up here, is that just like off the table for that particular area?
Oh no, I mean, I, I was thinking about that with either that or downtown east. Yeah, but we've also got other partners who have ideas where they'd like ACC to be as well, so.
And so before we jump off this point, I just want to make sure, you know, the, the question, Councilmember Ryan, that you, that you asked is kind of timing, right? I want, as you guys think about the vision, and that's the question that we're about to re-ask again, because we do want there to be a conversation here. That's centered around the question of, is this close to the vision that you all have? Is this way off? Are there major components that you think aren't here that should be? But when you think about that, think about it in the context of three years. I think one of the goals could be that we would love to see Elgin and Taylor and Maynor and the ETJ area, all of their leakage become our benefit, our sales tax benefit. Because in three years, the amount of development that's going to happen on that side of Flugerville is going to be crazy.
Remember, they break, they already broke ground in the new HEB. And that's going to unlock a lot of things in Maynor that have just been pent up for honestly generations.
Furthermore, east Flugerville Parkway, which this council has approved construction funding for, is going to become the major thoroughfare between nine seventy-three and collecting all of that area, taking it right in front of this development. So when you think about timing and all of those areas, not to mention what's happening within just the ETJ itself. What, what things in this, in this very rough concept excite you? What things don't excite you? That's what we want to hear.
The two things that, I'm sorry.
Go, go ahead.
The two things that, that strike me as, as critical pillars of this development is the, the university and the event center. Which we've got envisioned now as a single facility. I, I'm thinking that obviously the, the city is not building a university, but the, the, the city could build an event center and say, oh, look, we've got an event center here. That could be the first significant piece of, of construction on that. And then other things could build around that. And that's a, a, a good place to, to, to leverage in terms of, hey, look, you, you want to build a university? We've already got an event center here that you can use as part of that. And of course, I have that unusual experience of, of having been to, enrolled at four different universities that, that are very dramatically different geographically. I went to my last university, Texas Tech, which is the largest university by acreage in the United States. I grew up at Big Orange. So I had that experience, which was kind of an, you know, intermediate to large, but not as large as Texas Tech University. But I also did my undergraduate at the, the University of Houston Downtown, which is in a skyscraper. So, and you can put a lot of university in a very small place by acreage, or you can spread it way out. And then the University of Southern California is sort of in between there, slightly smaller than the University of Texas, but more traditional. And I would say UT and USC are more, more traditional in, in terms of universities. But we could put a lot more square footage on that acreage if, if we go more vertical. And it looks like the, the concept there is six to eight stories? Did I, did I read that right?
Four to seven.
So, you know, go to 10, go to 12. I, I don't know what that, what that does in terms of expenses, but I know that you would then be able to have a, a larger university footprint in terms of how many faculty, staff and students you could put there. So I think those, those are to me, the, the critical pieces. Housing, retail, I mean, we could put that anywhere. That, that, that doesn't strike me as, you know, special enough to justify the heavy city involvement. We want heavy city involvement in something, we need to make it something that is unique. And obviously bringing a university to the city would be huge and would be a, a game changer. And in terms of, of economic development, I've made this point and I haven't had anybody contradict me on it yet. And please contradict me about this if I'm wrong. But my understanding is that the, the top two energizers for economic development are a university and a Fortune 100 headquarters. And I, I don't know that we can bring a Fortune 100 headquarters to Flugerville right away. But if we could bring a university branch, whether it's Texas Tech or UNT, I don't think that the University of Texas is interested in doing a satellite this close to their main campus. But something like that. My understanding is that has generally a very great secondary economic benefit. And if I'm off on any of this, please tell me I'm off.
You know, creating a live, work, play and learn environment that has the amenities that make all that work together is exciting and attractive. We still have to test the market on which institutions, how much space they would need, what sorts of programs they would want to bring here. But we think that's a positive vision to start with. But then, as Jennifer said, when we go out to the market, we, we want to present that vision. We want to say, this is what we're trying to attract and make sure we're getting the attention of both the institutions and the developers that can deliver on those sorts of things. So we can test that out. But going into it, we think that's a very positive aspiration, but we need to test it.
Yeah, I was just thinking about, see, you brought the point about, I think we've heard from a couple of us regarding multifamily condos, everything else that goes with it. I just made sure I looked at the star. That's part of it. I mean, I mean, that comes with the package. And I don't mind having that around, as long as just like you said, that we have a big anchor, unique item that's going to go ahead and drive that. But walkability, I mean, that's, that's what, you know, we've talked about that for a while now, is that, hey, listen, we want those areas to that. Say what you will about Fluger Farm, man, you know, and I, you know, y'all laughed about when I told you Doug had to lend me money to get a light bulb at Home Depot. But it's nice, Highland Park, build this, ride my bike, go over to Home Depot, get what I need, go out, you know, ride back over there. Like that area is a very walkable area of our community. And to be able to replicate that with unique subsets, skillsets, anchors, you know, in those areas, that's awesome. And it's what drives us to there. Like I'm fascinated to see what's going to happen now that we're finally breaking ground multifamily by 1849. Like what is that going to look like now? Like how is, how are people, how's that going to drive what's going on in these areas? I mean, we're getting areas of the city that are going to be, they're, or, or building up their own identities. I am, like, I am just as fascinated to see the redevelopment on, on 1825. Like what is that going to look like? We're, you know, we're having a domino effect over here, you know, over, you know, on, on our south, our south entry. What does that look like and how does that impact what we want from there? I, I'm, it's great to hear from you saying that, hey, listen, I think that, you know, we have this and we have, you know, because we can control, knock on wood, based on what we do in our next, in our agenda item right there, you know? What we want regarding the convention center. That's right, we can control that. And just like you said, we build enough, incentivize, you know, have it enough where we can incentivize other folks to come play, for better lack of term, would be partners with those kinds of things.
Stone Hill is a great, is a great development that you, you're talking about. But in, that, that is not something that, that needed a whole lot of, of city input or a lot of city money. We just needed to give permission to the developers to build it. Well, what they did need was roads to get people there. And fortunately, the state, in its infinite wisdom, decided that they needed to put those two toll roads and have them intersect right there in our town.
Well, I would just, I would just say that, ask former mayor Jeff Coleman, how much this, you know, the city council, their folks worked with those developers, got the developers and incentivized them. And then, you know, you know, we got where we're at right there as well. So, I mean, I think, you know, the council sets the vision and the opportunity and people want to have willing partners. They don't want people that are going to have to drag with, argue with, or anything else out there. It's like, hey, listen, this is a partner we're from there as well. Luckily, owning the property, we get to say, okay, who we're going to partner with, as opposed to the partners picking who they choose to partner with us.
And having a responsive planning department. I mean, I, I think, you know, we have a reputation for being a lot easier to work with on those sorts of things, a lot faster. As Mr. Brown pointed out, what did you say it was?
Lightning.
Lightning speed compared to some of our neighbors.
Oh, no, 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 let's call them out, no, the city of Austin's a nightmare.
And we like, we like to go with warp speed.
I don't want to call anybody out right now.
Yeah, the, the mayor would prefer warp speed, but he's not, he's not here tonight. I, I just wanted to, to call out something I heard earlier, Councilmember Ryan say, that I'd like to emphasize. And that's, you know, is there a possibility for a performing arts center here? I, I think I heard that right, but I would, I would love to see, I don't know if that can be integrated into the conference center. I don't know if that works with the hotel tax rebate that we're, we're looking to do. But I would love to see some sort of performing arts center. And I don't know if that, then, you know, we, we form a partnership with an organization or even with the school district to make that happen, or if we go that alone. But I think performing arts is a, a huge opportunity for us in this area.
I think that, I don't think it's mutually exclusive, right? Like I don't, I don't, I don't think that, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I guess when I think of a convention center, I think of the arts. Like, yeah, like, like, I mean, that's what I, I think that, the arts.
The arts.
Yeah, like the great, the creative arts, like when I think of that, I.
What's the difference between the Bass Concert Hall versus Cedar Park? I mean, so.
Oh, see, I, I wasn't even thinking about the HEB center. Great points.
Well, but for a convention center, I'm thinking, you know, like the, oh goodness, whatever the one is in downtown Houston or, or wherever we hold TML. It's just a whole bunch of.
Georgia Brown.
Yeah, Georgia Brown, there we go. It's, it's just a whole bunch of meeting rooms. It's, it's conference rooms and, and there may be a banquet area, but not typically an auditorium. There, there may be an auditorium style, but not really an auditorium with full lighting and sound.
You know why I think about that? Because I think of, I was there the first year when the long center got, you know, broke ground and opened and it can, it changed from the turtle, you know, from the auditorium to the, to the.
The turtle was great, that's where I saw Rod.
I know, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's crazy, right? Like it, and it doesn't even seem like it's been that long ago, but I mean.
David remembers when it was a rain building.
Yeah, exactly.
That's where I saw Devo.
So I always think of, when I think of, eh, when I think of that, I think, I think of literally, that's what I think of a convention center. I really, till you put it that way, I hadn't thought of it otherwise.
Yeah, I, I love that idea. I just, I want to say the obvious, please be cognizant of traffic, I mean, they're already breaking ground or building houses right to the west of that area. And I'm envisioning, and they're putting those houses pretty close together. So I'm envisioning that traffic plus college traffic, plus concert traffic. And you combine that with Fourth of July on the lake or something like that, yeah, it could.
You mean those two lanes aren't going to be.
I mean, it's a four lane.
Yeah, they become.
But traffic problems are my favorite problems to solve, because it means there are people there. And there are people that want to be there. So I, I mean, we've talked about our, our future cross-section and this may end up being a six-lane road instead of a four-lane road. But yeah, give me, give me traffic problems, because I can solve traffic problems. I can't, I can't solve the problem of getting people.
Well, I mean, and that's an R for you versus what Rudy just talked about out there off of, off of Cameron. Or by 1849, that's not our road, so.
No.
Not yet.
That's going to be a nightmare. Kelly, Wayne?
So if we were talking about vision, I don't, I, you know, I'm just coming into this new, and so I don't have specific things, but just the words that came to mind was unique and regional. So something that to bring people to, right, sales tax and, and something different, you know, to bring that excitement. You know, I, as a CPA, I'm always going to be concerned with. You know, I, as a C P A, I'm always going to be concerned with the cost recapture and the impact to the property, you know, property tax or taxpayers, so, I mean, that, that's just going to be my concern overall.
All right, well, thank you, Thomas, Robin, Brian, Jennifer, Mark, and Jay.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton.
My pleasure. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to item agenda two B, which is to conduct a presentation on the finance department, and this will be coming from our own Tracy. Just a moment to move around. Oh, your name tag magically appeared.
I, I'd never do.
Very quick.
I don't know. If I, if I need one, I'll pull up my laptop.
Feel kind of lonely up here.
Yeah.
Wow, Tracy's got the whole table yourself.
Feel free to spread out.
Brought my staff, so.
All right, go right ahead, Ms. Tracy.
Well, I'm excited this evening to bring information about the finance department. For me, this is the first time I presented our department to you, so we do have 23 budgeted full-time positions, 17 on the finance side and six on the utility billing side. We are fully staffed on the finance side, and we have made our last offer to our last opening on the utility billing side, so I'm very excited to get the entire department fully staffed.
When you say utility billing, is that when I'm calling 990-6100?
Customer service.
I didn't see 23 people in that picture.
Yeah, the, I do not have a picture of all, all of us, but.
So how close are you to fully staffed at this point?
We are almost fully staffed.
What, just one position?
We have one position in utility billing, and we've made an offer to a candidate, so we're extremely close to being fully staffed, very excited about that. Responsibilities and services, these are not everything that we do, but I was trying to give a little bit of an epicness of, we touch a lot of things, and we do a lot of things. We want to be professional, we want to be efficient, we want to give good customer service. We see ourselves as an internal department, so we give customer service internally to all departments, but also externally to our citizens. It's always tricky, there's a little delay.
What's the P card program?
So we do have a purchasing card program, so those are just cards that the city uses departments.
Like credit card?
A departmental credit card.
Yes. So mainly for small purchases, travel, things like that, so we do, we do run that program. And we get a, a pretty significant rebate on that program as well, which is nice. Our year in review, so I started September of 2023, and October of 2023, we converted to a new financial software, so we have been learning and growing in that software. It is very robust, has lots of bells and whistles, and now that we've had a year underneath our feet, we're really looking forward to digging deeper into the software to see other things that we can do with it. In April of 2024, we went live with our payroll and our human resources conversion. And so had a lot of conversions in the last year, learning a lot. In June is when we officially went live with doing P C D C's financials, but we were ramping up to that kind of go-live month for, for months. And so that has been going well. Right now, we're in our financial audit, and they're included in that, and everything's going smoothly on that. One thing that we were not doing was paying vendors electronically, everything was check. And so we have put a process in place, and we have started, especially with our, we started with our C I P vendors and got them on E F T and have slowly tried to push that out and make that a little bit more aggressive with getting people on that. And that way, we're not recutting lost checks and things like that. Cash management efficiencies, we've consolidated some accounts that were not necessary. We've moved to a pooled cash environment, which is, can be hard to explain, but it's a much more efficient way of doing cash management, and so that has smoothed out and made those operations work more efficiently. And we have moved our fixed assets over into our E R P P software. They were originally on it, on an Excel spreadsheet, and we've got them into the E R P program and are slowly refining descriptions and making sure that we can explain those fixed assets a little bit better. So purchasing accounts payable on payroll is one side of the house. These are just some stats from the last year. Purchase orders, 498, which is the equivalent of about 22 million. We had 259 contracts for 103 million, 13,000 purchasing card transactions for about 3 million. We did about 15 requests for proposals and quotes. I did want, I felt like that number might be a little low, but I think we also utilize cooperative purchasing contracts as much as we have the opportunity to do so, which lowers the amount of formal requests we have to do on payments, a little over 5,000 for 221 million. We do 465 bi-weekly payroll, we pay employees, but in, in our peak seasonal period, which is during the summer, camps and pools, it's about 620. And we have 67 active capital projects, and what that means is all of those invoices that come along with those projects, along with bond transfers and tracking all those projects, so that, that's quite a bit.
Are they bi-weekly payroll spikes in summertime, that's larger than parks?
Yes, lifeguards, camps, yes. And it's seasonal, it'll go back down after the summer. We've been very busy on the debt side this last year. We issued the 2024 A, it's Texas Water Development Board, it's for wastewater infrastructure of 122 million. We also took our first loan out. We did a master agreement with, for W F I A and took our first loan out of 156 million earlier in the year, and that was for water infrastructure. We are currently working on the next, we call them tranches. So tranche two is about, going to be about 176 million, that'll be for both water and wastewater projects. We also have two applications into the Texas Water Development Board, one for the raw water line and one for the water treatment plant. And so there's, there were, there are other debt management stuff that we're doing, but these are the big ones. Obviously, you've seen.
Just to be clear, these are all low-interest loans, either from the federal or the state government?
Either that, or, like with W F I A, you only pay for the debt that you draw, and so that's very unique with that program. Normally, we have to issue the bonds and we start paying on them, whether we're spending the money or not. So that's a very creative financing opportunity with the W F I A loans.
So W F I A costs us a lot less over time.
And we can, we, we don't start paying on a lot of that debt until we actually use the funds or draw down the funds.
Is there future opportunities to use that program for the W F I A loan, or are we maxed out on what, what we've been authorized?
So we have a master agreement, and right now, we're projecting three tranches, which is three separate loans. We've issued one, and now we're working on two, and then about a year from now, we'll be doing the third. So we know what those projects are, but we also know the timing of when we need the funds, and so that's why we're planning those tranches out over, spreading them out a year at a time.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Tracy, those are the large water wastewater projects that we're anticipating for the next 20 years. Am I wrong?
They're, I wouldn't say 20, I mean, they, obviously, the infrastructure lasts longer than that, but they're, our five-year C I P right now is what those projects consist of.
Are we, are we anticipating other large water or wastewater projects in the next 20 years outside of those? Thomas is nodding his head, yes.
I mean, there will always be infrastructure projects, may not be to the size of, like, the wastewater plant or the water plant, but yes, definitely.
Are, are, we're talking about projects that are significantly smaller than the new wastewater plant, Thomas, is that correct?
Go ahead.
So, yeah, we have other projects that are kind of, that are smaller than the water wastewater treatment plant. Pipeline conveyance systems are always going to be kind of in the, in the C I P, whether you're installing new pipelines or rehabilitating existing lines that are kind of at their 48-year end of life cycle. If that answers your question.
Can you use, would be, have opportunity to use additional W F I A loans for, for those, those other projects after we do the, the three drawdowns that you discussed?
Some of them would be eligible, I would think.
Would we have to seek future authorization, or do we have a, like a whole equity line of credit that we can just keep drawing from?
Our, our master agreement does have dollar limitations. I mean, so we will exhaust that master agreement at some point. We would have to come back with another agreement, is my understanding.
If we, if we exhausted the entirety of that master agreement, we would have to come back with them and say, hey, we have this other, let's say, five, six, seven years from now, and this program's still active, we would come back to them and say, hey, we have this in our five-year C I P, do you still have funds available? We would fill out another application and go through the same process again and figure out how they would want to.
Would be like, starting from all over versus extending or amending the current contract?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. So as far as reporting is concerned, just wanted to highlight, we do have a lot of reporting compliance, either internally or externally. There's lots of reports that the state comptroller requires. Obviously, we have our annual comprehensive financial report, which we're going through our audit and finishing that up right now. We do the budget-to-actual reporting to you, we do monthly and quarterly reports. The debt obligation is a state comptroller required reporting, but it's actually that we have this information on our website, which we do, and so if you go to the finance page, you will find the debt obligation transparency on there. Monthly and quarterly, I've already mentioned that. We do quarterly department meetings with each of our departments to make sure that we're on the same page with where we are budget-to-actual. We have hotel occupancy tax compliance, that's an annual reporting, and also we will be providing the economic development annual report coming up here very soon. Something new we have this year, we're utilizing our budgeting software, which has this transparency module, and so we have put this out on our website, and it will compare the fiscal 25 budget to actuals. So each month, as we complete the monthly close, we'll be uploading new actuals so that those can be compared out there. And they do go, this is just a snippet, it's showing general fund, but if you do the drop down, all of our funds in there, and if you drill down far enough, you can see line item comparison, budget-to-actual.
Very transparent. Are other cities doing something similar?
Yeah.
Love it.
And I mean, ClearGAP offers this, there's other products that offer the transparency piece of the software as well. So kind of switching to the utility billing, we do have some stats for them as well. 24,000 and a half customers, new customers over the last year is 3,500. Water Smart active, I mean, we do look at how much traction we're having on some of our portals that we offer. So the Water Smart is fairly new within the last year, so we have 2,700 users on that. Portal payments through our website, payment portal was 141,000.
Tracy, what did we anticipate, the percentage of people to utilize Water Smart? Because I know that some people like myself, we wish, we wish we had that service.
Yeah. I know that, I know that we push it a lot. And I know that that type of program takes a while to ramp up, so I think we went live in January of 2024, so it's been, you know, just barely a year. I know, I know the customer service staff offers this a lot when they're talking to people and they're concerned about their consumption, and we always point them back to the Water Smart portal, how to register and how to monitor and get notifications. And I've, I've got a slide on the Water Smart, but yeah, you know, we want to encourage people to get registered and to, to take a look at that.
Do you have data as to the people who are, who have signed up and issues with that, you know, those 2,700, any issues that there, because I, I personally, on my, my home, as well as the H O A, we're not getting the data, you know, consistently. So I'm just wondering if that is a problem with more than just, you know, me?
So I know there was a hiccup between when we went live on our conversion, I know, I know there were some days there that were missed. I don't know that there were any issues before that, so I would have to check with the department to see if there were.
You ever told, like, whatever transmitter from the wa, the meter to, that it's gone offline and have to get back online, you know, that's more with the H O A, so maybe that has to do with mowing.
Okay.
But I'm just curious if.
Yeah, if they run over the radio.
Yeah.
I had a similar problem, where the, the transmitter would go offline for three or four days and come back on, and it looks like I have this huge spike on one day, but actually, that is, it's just picking up four or five days where all at once.
I know that Brandon is listening to everything y'all are saying, so.
I'm, I'm curious if you can tell us why we had a 15% increase in, in customers year over year, and I guess the number of bills that we, we have matches the total number of customers almost exactly there. Are there a few that aren't?
So new customers can be new builds, new homes that go online, but they can also be moving within, moving into or moving within the jurisdiction.
Okay, so some of that is new construction, but some of that is just Bob moved from First Street to Eighth Street.
Correct.
And so he counted as a new customer, even though it's the same Bob. Okay.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
I'm, I'm kind of surprised at the high number of bills still being printed in this day and age. I don't know.
I'm telling you, I, I.
Maybe it's the population, we're, we're, some of us are older population, and I still like to see my bill.
Sometimes it's really hard to get people to let go, and we give them the option of not having, like, obviously, we, we don't want to print the bill if they're getting the E bill, but over the last couple of weeks, I've been helping, taking calls, and it's been interesting that even though they're getting the E bill, they're not actually looking at the bill, even though it's coming in through E bill. So we'll continue to push the electronic options, obviously, that's the direction that we would like people to go in, but sometimes it's, they're resistant to let go of that paper bill.
I like my paper bill. I mean, it's, yeah.
Really?
That's what the print button is for.
I mean, my, my livelihood depends on print, and, yeah, it doesn't surprise me.
So Doug's saying absolutely, people.
Drawbooks and papers are different than the bill that you're just going to.
And I, I use E bills. I don't know about you guys, all, all my bills are E bills.
Yeah.
But, no, it doesn't surprise me with the population.
But we do have more E bills than print, so we're.
Yeah, you're trending in the.
We're heading in the right direction.
I mean, with, because with postage and paper and time, well, I don't know, you probably have a printing.
We have, we do use a third party, yeah, absolutely.
But still.
So did want to talk about utility billing, went live in November, we've had a lot of conversions this last year. This particular conversion came with a few more challenges than we anticipated, and just want to kind of touch on those. The new account numbers that were established, even though they're just a little bit different than what we had in N code, our new software actually tracks, and, and it, it helps with, like, landlord accounts and stuff, that makes it a lot easier, but you have a, you have a, a location, which is your account number, which is based on the address, and then you have a customer number.
Right.
And so this did throw a kink in how we communicate and get the information from our third-party providers.
I noticed that also came up when I paid my bill over the phone, and it asked for an eight-digit account number.
I'm gonna, we're gonna talk about I V R, because that's our over-the-phone. Yes, so we did, yes, we had some issues with our. we did, yes, we had some issues with our current over the phone provider is a third party, and they wanted to charge us fifteen thousand dollars just to change the account structure. And we were like, I don't think so. And so we're behind the curve. If we would have known, we would have had, but we're actually going with our new software. They offer an over the phone, which will import directly into our software instead of us having to manually import it. So it's a better direction. It's just that we're behind the curve. So if we get the call and somebody wants to pay over the phone, we do tell them that you'll have to use your old account and we'll provide that account number for them. But hopefully, within the next month, we'll actually be able to shift over to our new provider of over the phone payments.
I just added a one and it worked.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know.
Sometimes you can manipulate it a little bit and it'll still take it. But yes. We know that we had some delayed billings. We had some errors that occurred when we were running some of these billings. I know that we had some errors that only our software company could fix. And so we had to wait for them to get those fixed. So we did have some delays. I do believe the kinks of all of that have been worked out. We do have a new utility manager, and she has been very diligent about laying out the calendar. Our new software, even though it's more robust and and does have a lot of great features, every process takes longer. And so we have to plan accordingly. We have to plan accordingly to make sure that we start the process early so that we can end when we need to. So I think most of those delays have been worked out and we shouldn't see those going forward.
Are those all related to, is that Tyler or is that Data Pros?
It's Tyler.
Oh, what? Problems with Tyler technology? That's surprising.
Never. We also had call volume elevated. So we did have a time there where we were all answering the phones and I would literally like get off the phone and it would ring again. And we know that we created some of this call volume by having some of these issues. I have.
Drives me nuts.
Our IT department has been wonderful and they've been working with us on the phone system, but also providing us along in for the analytics. So we're able to see how our staff is doing, how the calls are coming in. That has been incredibly helpful. We had issues with e-bills going out late. So what happened was it would timeout. Like, it would take so long to run the e-bills because some of our zones are fairly large. It would timeout. And so.
The system would timeout?
Running it off of Tyler's system.
Yeah.
Because we're on the, we're on the cloud.
Yeah.
It would timeout. So our IT department did get involved. They have set up a dedicated server that has solved our problem. Is it a long term fix? I don't think so. But until we can have meetings with Tyler and figure out why we can't run our zones.
So that's what I was going to ask you. So as a lawyer, David Trowell and I are all too familiar with Tyler technologies and the unique challenges that come with that. Who do we have? Do we do we have a dedicated person? Because what we had, I mean, and the Supreme Court had to get involved in this. Do we have a dedicated person who is personally working with us? Like, have they designated somebody to help be help ameliorate these issues and get them done at an efficient speed as opposed to a speed that's good for them?
We do. And even though our project manager for this conversion has kind of stepped out at this point, we still reach out to her. And we're like, this is still broken. This is still part of the conversion. You need to get, and she's very attentive and she's very quick. We also have a dedicated person from our IT department here that's basically our project manager, and she is in constant communication with Tyler, putting in tickets, elevating tickets. I mean, so we do all have all those things going, but, you know, we still have seen some issues during this process and we're working through those issues. Another thing was, I know I'm telling you now that we're going to be fully staffed, there was a time during this process that we had three of our six utility billing positions full. And so that was, that that's painful. And when you have half your staff. So very excited that we are about to be fully staffed again. That will also help on the phones and getting to customers more timely. So I think I've covered most of the solutions. We did create a phone call queue, which means that if they call and they go through the list of people that can answer the phone, it will leave them on there. And if somebody hangs up, then they'll they'll answer it and they'll be waiting. That has helped. I feel like we're at least able to talk to someone, even if it's just, can I take a message and we'll call you back. They feel like they're being heard and that has helped. Yes, I think I covered most of that. Here's the Water Smart link. And, you know, we're we're trying to direct as many people to this as possible. Sometimes they're very informed when they actually get registered and see when their sprinkler system goes on or where they, you know, what days of the week and what times of the day they actually see an elevation. It it is very enlightening. So we are definitely pointing people towards this. And just a snippet of our pay payment portal, this is if you were logged in, if you if you have registered on the portal. But there is also a quick pay. So if somebody doesn't want to create a registry, they can just go in, put in their account number and do a quick pay. So that is the end of my presentation. I know you've asked questions, but if you
Any questions, counsel?
Is that the solar eclipse?
Yes. Thank you so much.
Yes, it was the solar.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to item agenda two C. This was brought up by Councilmember Rogers, his discussion regarding a long term strategy for the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, also known as the ETJ. I'm going to go ahead and kick it off and turn it over to Councilmember Rogers.
Well, thank you very much. This was actually prompted by a conversation I had with Councilmember Mitya about some proposals that are in the legislature currently to to strip us of extraterritorial jurisdiction entirely. And of course, in the in the previous session, legislature, what's the right, what's the diplomatic way to say this? Doug, help me out with this. They limited, limited our ability to to annex above and beyond what it had been before.
Yeah.
And it's now, of course, also easier for people who are in the ETJ to disannex themselves from us. When we had originally built our our master, master plan, we were doing it in 2021, and of course, we were operating on a different legal landscape. We we had the ability to go out and involuntarily annex. And the really, the only limitation we had about annexation was where we, if we annexed a mud, we were going to have to assume the mud debt unless there was some sort of agreement to the to the contrary, which is not something that muds are often anxious to do. So that we had the mud issue limiting our our ability to expand, but but that was about it. And now we have a lot more limitations. And, you know, the question, are we going to go all the way to nine seventy three? I think, you know, was answered in the affirmative in 2021. And I'm not sure that we can answer that in the affirmative right now, given the the legis- the legislative hurdles that we are now facing. I know we are obviously acquiring land east of our current boundaries and then land east in our current boundaries. And we can annex any land that that the city owns, like the wastewater plant. But, you know, I I don't know if it is feasible for us to continue with that plan, given these new hurdles. And I'd like to hear what other people have to say about it. And of course, I welcome any insights from from counsel, legal counsel.
Counsel and counsel. I feel like we we had this conversation at our at our retreat a year ago, and we talked about establishing, having PCDC in particular purchase land out along nine seventy three, finding dedicated parcels that would allow us to establish contiguity with city limits, not just those out parcels that that would be, you know, annexed in and of themselves, but islands. So I I'm curious why you think that's no longer applicable with the legislative landscape? Because, I mean, until something passes, I tend to take the approach that we're operating under the the rules we have. And I think building contiguity helps preserve our our ability to annex all the way out to nine seventy three.
Well, I I think that the direction to PCDC on that scale is is wise. And I think that that's, you know, that's helpful. But we still are are going to have trouble annexing, you know, unless people want to be annexed. And now we have, you know, been able to to get some agreements with with large landowners before they develop. And that's that's helpful to the extent that we can do that. But, you know, we don't have that. Okay, we're annexing you, you know, next Tuesday, and there's nothing you can do about it ability anymore. And I'm really concerned about the the idea that the legislature might strip us of of our ETJ entirely. I mean, that really, if they do that, you know, and there are a lot of, you know, there's pretty strong proposals out there. I'd be surprised if the whole thing passes in this session. But, you know, they, the legislature, you know, they've been, they've been keen on on restricting the powers of cities a lot in the last decade. And if we lose that, we lose a really, really valuable planning tool.
So let's be more blunt. The current, and this was why it mattered to wait and see about whatever we're going to do legislative in ideas, who the speaker was, because then you have the history of the speaker, backgrounds, viewpoints, ideas. The current speaker is no friend of cities or counties. He's already shown that, you know, on numerous occasions right there. That's, that's, that's a given. The current speaker has no qualms whatsoever with any sort of legislation that in fact would impact the ability for cities to lose their ability to annex, to to encourage more de-annexation and to strip of ETJs. What makes us unique in this situation is that we do own and continue to have a large CCN. So we, you know, we, we are the game in town, for better lack of term, in a specific areas. And we, you know, we have a great partner in Mannville, and there he is trying to service these areas. But to your point, which is a fair question, is that what does that look like when we look at our basins? Like, we have our basins and, you know, we go through, you know, where where we're getting our fees from, some of these other aspects from that. We're going to find out very quickly. I mean, quickly as in sign or dies, you know, you know, June fir. Yeah, yeah. Like, we will find out where we are in this level. I think that it's prudent to keep that in mind. But at the same time, you know, you know, and and you've known me for a long time now. You know what I've been saying, the March nine seventy three, this is what we need to do. We need to set the boundaries. We need to set what that looks like, because everybody else is doing that in the area. Case in point, what Maynor's doing with with HEB and some major other industries are about to announce they're going to be anchoring to HEB with what Taylor's doing, you know, with Samsung. Either way, whatever's going on with Samsung, still going through with that. And UT literally being down the street, you know, Utah from there. We never hear much about Hutto, but I'm sure Hutto will, will go get, will get, you know, that's because we are from that. But I like the idea of still encouraging our economic development corporation to buy land out there, see what's reasonable from there. I like the idea of what we talked about at our retreat regarding Seal Road, and ultimately, again, Seal Road and what that ultimately looks like going all the way from there. But it, but I agree, it's prudent to look at and be realistic about where we look at. And it's the question that we had going back to our retreat. Where are we in our maturation process? Like, we reiterated tonight, we said, hey, listen, this, you know, what we're trying to do here with this new project is going to be in the the heart of the city, because the heart of the city would be Lake Flugerville if we build out to our maturation process. But there are enough cities around us, enough folks around us, who are being realistic, and it's unfortunate that they're just not going to be able to reach their potential, because you have a legislators that will not allow for that. So I say that we keep an eye on it. I don't think we deviate from what we're doing moving forward. But I also think that we we're, we have to have a sobering reality that I don't think the barriers are going to, are going to get lessened. I think they're going to continue the hurdles going from there.
Well, Seal Road, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
Oh, so I was just wondering, you know, given the limit, I'm also, so I didn't know about this strategy about PCDC purchasing land. So I guess maybe someone can enlighten me at a later point, unless you want to do it now. But my other thought was about existing neighborhoods and the ability to annex them or not, you know, or no longer be able to annex them, and how that affects our population estimates and our growth, you know, over the next twenty or thirty years, and not being able to bring them into the city limits. And then Emily had mentioned at the retreat about the fiscal annexation study that was happening. So I'm hoping that that would give us more information about the cost and benefits of, you know, annexing certain things. But I, but I think if we can't annex, you know, all of those neighborhoods that are already existing, that greatly reduces our population that we're going to serve. And I think that should be taken into consideration with future planning.
I agree. And and that plays into, play off of Rudy's point about Seal Road. It costs a lot of money to build roads.
And there's only two ways to do it, taxes or tolls.
Well, and we seal, much of Seal Road is, almost all of Seal Road is in the county.
Absolutely.
And the county has not shown any great enthusiasm for improving the roads in Flugerville area. The county spends a lot of money improving roads on the west side of the county, but not so much out here. And.
We need to cut this part down so far since it.
You know, if if we want to improve Seal Road, we're going to annex down Seal Road, but we're not going to be able to annex the neighborhoods on either side to pay for the improvements on Seal Road. We're going to have a problem. And we're going to have, you know, people coming to us who live off of Seal Road and neighborhoods out there that we can't annex. And they're going to say, why haven't you fixed my road? And we're going to say, you need to talk to the county.
Kelly Lynn Part Two.
But that's not really, you know, that's not a, that's not a solution. That's just an exercise in buck passing. And I'm just trying to figure out, if we are going to encourage development further down Seal Road, how do we square that circle? And we make sure that we get tax revenue to support the service that we want to provide. We want that that road to be better. You know, there are roads on the east side of Flugerville or right outside the east side of Flugerville that we've been talking about improving for a long time. But what's the, what's the price gone up to? Almost two million dollars a lane mile?
Oh, no, 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 two point seven five.
Two point seven five. I remember when we first started talking about it, it was just over a million dollars a lane mile.
Yeah.
And it's gone up incredibly dramatically in the last five years. And.
And as we were saying at the.
We can't annex people we can't pay for.
It's not going to go down. They're not going to go gently on that. And I mean, I think that what's interesting is Cameron Road, right? We're pulling Flugerville Parkway all the way across to Cameron Road. Cameron Road is a road that been driving on for, ah, okay, Girl Scout troop just came through.
I was on Cameron Road this morning on my way to, at Bentley Talk.
And how many times have they?
It was.
Repaved it.
Awful. I mean, I was, I was having to get out of the right hand lane into oncoming traffic because the potholes were so big. Somebody's got to fix that. And, you know, if we if we can annex, you know, obviously, we've got a lot more ability there to pay for that. If the legislature takes that away from us, is it, is it prudent for us to to encourage development in that area?
That's a question, I mean, because we already, we have, what is the, what's the property, the, the subdivision of Cameron called? Middle, yeah, middle, I mean, that's, I mean, they're, it's being built as we speak.
And they, and they opted for annexation, I think that's, I think that's a big part of it, is, you know, those, those existing neighborhoods, maybe, maybe not, though we may lose the ability to annex them, we may have already lost the ability to annex them, uh practically speaking. Uh, but new developments, that's, that's part of the development process and, and frankly, we, we may not have the we, we still have rights in the, in the ETJ now and I can't allow fear to drive my plans.
So we need to keep an eye on it because we may, we may not have those rights six months from now.
That's different from fear though, I mean, that's, I mean, I agree, I think, I think you both are, you both are saying something like, hey, listen, we get those, we find out and.
But we, we do need to be cognizant if we're going to annex, you know, like a patchwork quilt in some of these areas that you know, if you allow, if we're gonna annex a, a neighborhood out there and the cost of the road is more than what the neighborhood is gonna, you know, to add to it, that has to be a con- a consideration when we agree to annex something, that there's going to be enough out there to share the cost of the infrastructure that the city needs to, to um install and maintain.
That's weird, I thought Serena was sitting right here, but apparently I'm hearing Serena over here.
But tax base and impact fees from the development, so that is, that is part of the development process.
Yeah, but true, but i- if you have just one neighborhood on a road versus three or four on both sides, that's, the cost sharing, you know, formula is affected.
I just, I mean, I just think that in reiterate, um, because Serena Senior over here asked me that question years ago about why Flugerville, why annexation, why is that, why do I have such, you know, viewpoints and concerns about it? I see how we serve our citizens and I see how we make a demonstrable difference in the lives of our citizens just making sure that we, we have an equitable balance about who gets what, where, everywhere around the city, all this, all the, all the great things that we're doing, we don't just keep it in one specific area. Then I see what's hap- what happens on Desa. I see what happens at the Bermuda Triangle, those folks who, who like Fortress Desa, Fort Desa, is that what it is? Yeah, you know, it's people that, that, that Flugerville addresses, but they're not in Flugerville, they're Austin ETJ and, 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 and the quagmire and the issues and concerns that come from that. I, and, and what's makes Austin or Flugerville unique as compared to Austin is that the people that live out there, generational Flugerville, they look at themselves as Flugerville, they're in our ETJ, but they look at themselves as generational Flugervilleans. They want to be a part of the city. The part that's gonna be the issue and the thing that was incumbent on us to remind not only our reps, but the reps in East Texas and other areas is that, hey, listen, when you hurt places like Austin and other places like that, you're hurting places like us as well.
Very rich dialogue, anything else, counsel? We definitely will continue, this conversation is gonna continue to come up. Um, so thank you, David Rogers, for bringing it up, um, it is six forty-nine, I almost put on my radio hat in the capital city, this is not it. Um, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our um work session for the evening. Thank you, watch this, watch this.